Good evening, everybody. I would like now to call the open committee of the whole meeting of Tuesday, October 13th, 2020 back to order and remind everyone to turn their cellphones off for the duration of the meeting. I will ask the acting clerk to provide a report concerning matters discussed during the earlier session, closed session.
Certainly. There was one item on the closed agenda this evening, and on that item, committee received a quarterly staff report from the CIO on his performance goals and measurements. And for the information of anyone watching online, all members of council are in attendance except for Councilor McKinnon.
Thank you. I will now ask the acting clerk to provide a report concerning matters discussed. Oh, shoot. We're backing up here. We've passed that part already. We have no delegations this evening, and we have no presentations this evening. And public notices, I'll listen.
We have no public notices this evening.
We have no public notices this evening. Staff reports, I would like to ask Ms. Coffey to present her staff report.
She's on there, right?
Yep. Can she hear me? I think is, is she on mute? Tiffany, can you turn your mic on? Oh, itchy eyes.
You may want to come back to the report.
Okay.
Hi, sorry, everyone. My computer was on mute, so I didn't even hear it get started.
Thank you.
I've got my toddler here beside me, too, so I'm slightly distracted. Derek's not quite in yet. So my, my quick staff report today is for council to enter into a land lease agreement with the City of Dryden and provincial helicopters. And so basically, we have a hangar that's been up for sale, and it looks like it will be sold here shortly to provincial helicopters. And so I've drafted up a lease that's pretty much standard to our current leases that we do have in place for land leases, with the exception of the terms, there's a slight tweak. So the initial term for this lease is set to be 12 years, as long as the City of Dryden has the discretion to adjust the lease rental rates as per section 4.03 of the lease. So after the 12 years, provincial helicopters will have the option to extend the term for two times five-year terms, and then another for three, for a total of 25. And so basically, the size of their land lease is 1,750 square meters, which at our rate of $1.90 per square meters, we would see a total of $3,325 plus tax each year.
Thank you.
And that's pretty much it for me.
Thank you, Ms. Coffey.
Unless any questions.
Any questions from council? Everyone is good? Thank you.
Question through the chair? It's the mayor?
Yeah, I can't see you, Greg, so it's kind of hard to... Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Tiffany. I'm just wondering, so Fenway bought the hangar originally because of their construction project, is that correct?
They took over previously, it was owned by Casper Aviation, and then they are currently using it to... I know, hold on. Hawkman, can you sit for just one second, please? Yeah, so they're using the hangar currently for storage as part of the construction with the M&amp;R.
Okay, so it's a good news story.
Yep.
Great, thank you.
No problem.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Not seeing any, so I guess we have a bylaw that will be brought forward for the October 26th meeting. Thank you, Tiffany.
Thanks so much.
You're welcome. Have a good evening. At this time, I would like to ask Mr. Peacock to present his staff report. Tyler?
Hi, good evening, everybody. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Perfect. So thank you for the opportunity, Madam Chair and Council, for allowing me to present this this evening. Quick recommendation, that council pass a resolution approving the CIP tax increment equivalent grant application received from the 20 King Street developer representing a value not exceeding the amount of $250,000. I just have one correction that I would like to make here, under the disclosure. So I'd like to just note, to please recognize that the developer is a current member of council and is related to the registered property owner of the CIP application. I believe the report that you received indicated that the member of council was both the owner and the registered property owner, or pardon me, the developer and the registered property owner. I just wanted to make that small correction there. So we received some information later on in the day-to-day, just to correct that. So I'm anticipating that everyone has had the opportunity to go through the report. So just quickly, under the discussion heading, the City of Dryden has been working with the developer's engineering firm who is responsible for the project coordination in the development of the 20 King Street property, formerly the Central Hotel. This engineering firm is LVE Group. Through our dialogue with LVE Group, we have been informed of the cost of redevelopment of the site at 20 King Street, specifically the cost to remediate the site to a state which would be deemed buildable. LVE has applied on behalf of the developer for a tax increment equivalent grant in the amount of $250,000. The developer has shared with us the expenses related to redeveloping the 20 King Street site to a buildable condition. Those costs are totaling approximately $529,000, or $529,800, pardon me. We've reviewed those costs, and we believe that these costs are realistic and justifiable in terms of the site remediation. Staff acknowledged that the City of Dryden has already contributed to this redevelopment project in the form of a land disposition and the waiving of city fees, landfill tipping fees, et cetera. While difficult to accurately assess the value of the land, staff estimate that the city contributions to date are approximately $279,000. The requested grant of $250,000 would be in addition to the estimated contributions thus far. Overall, this redevelopment project has provided the City of Dryden with some substantial benefits, and I'm sure there's other things here that you folks can pick up on, but just quickly, addressing an abandoned building that had become a safety hazard for the downtown businesses and area and emergency services. Addressing and resolving a liability for the municipality, avoiding a significant capital outlay from the municipality in the form of a forced demolition of a former structure, and the cost of remediation of the land to a site ready for development. Immediate construction of a modern office building resulting in a sizable and reliable tax stream for the City of Dryden for many years to come. It retains professionals in our community in the downtown area, provides an example of how our CIP might be used for future development and redevelopment projects, and this new property will continue to reinvigorate our downtown and stimulate the economy in the area. So taking into consideration the detailed review the staff have done on this application, the submitted demolition costs, the contributions already made by the city to this redevelopment project, and the substantial financial benefits, or pardon me, substantial benefits the community has received and will continue to receive from this project, staff are recommending that council approve the CIP tax increment equivalent grant application at a fixed-dollar amount, no more than $250,000, with the duration of the grant to be determined at the time of impact's reassessment of the property. So at this time, I'd just like to open it up to the floor for any questions.
Councilor McKinnon? Shane?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Peacock, for your report. And just to be crystal clear, this aspect of the community improvement program is available to anyone who applies and meets the criteria, and then it's approved by council. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And then further, that the program has been advertised throughout our various means, throughout the community, along with the other aspects of the CIP program in the last, since it's been approved, I believe, last year.
That's correct. So in December of 2019, Chief Building Official Pam Skelland and I did our best to canvass the community with the information, including some bill stuffers that were sent out, just to remind people, business owners, of the opportunities that exist, not only within the tax increment equivalent grant, but within the entire CIP.
Very good. Thank you.
I do want to comment on the disclosure statement. Again, in the spirit of transparency and openness, I think it's great to see it disclosed that a current councillor is the developer of the property. But I do want to say that it's equally important to note that in every representation to council regarding the development of this property, councillor in question has recused himself from those discussions in every instance. And so I just want to say that publicly, that he has participated in no council discussions or debates on the property sale or on the development. So his handling of this issue, from my perspective as a councillor, has been beyond reproach, and I just want the public to know that. And that builds on some of the comments councillor McKinnon previously made with respect to the fact that these applications of these grants are available to anybody in the community that has a similar project and wants to bring that forward. Secondly, just back to the application, and again, this is fairly new for the public as well, that a significant element of the CIP program, as it applies in this case, is to incent developers to build new projects or redevelopment projects that otherwise may not proceed without some sort of incentive. And so again, through the CIP process, the city has the ability, on a case-by-case basis, to provide incentives where that may result in a development that might otherwise not proceed. So because of those things and the due diligence that, Tyler, you've done with your group and the CIO and Pam Skelland, I support certainly this CIP application because it is also aligned with the terms of sale of the property and certainly aligned with our incentive programs within the city. I just wanted to make those few statements and suggest that that's been some pretty good work done by Tyler yourself, Pam, and the developer, and the City of Dryden in terms of getting this downtown redevelopment project off the ground. So thank you and good work.
Thank you, Councilor Bush.
Thank you, Councilor Bush. Any other questions? Seeing none, I believe a motion is going to be brought forward on October 26th in regards to the CIP application. Thank you, Mr. Peacock.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
At this time, I would like to ask Chief Grimwood to present his staff reports.
Good evening, members of council. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Perfect. So my first report before you tonight is just an information report where we're summarizing our third quarter activities for you. I won't go through it line by line, but a few highlights are that our staffing levels are stable. We have one vacant full-time position, a fire prevention officer, that closed on Friday. We received 24 applications, which is, we're very happy with, just the fact that there's that much interest in the position and the depth of candidates is a good sign for us. Our retention of volunteer firefighters is stable, and other than the four recruits who deferred their training due to COVID, our numbers are exactly where we've targeted them. Our call volume in the third quarter and our call volume to date, there's no particular anomalies, there's nothing concerning, there's no trends that we're concerned about. The call volume was down. In most fire departments across the province, the call volume was down because of so many changes and less workplaces and less people on the road, but it's, through the month of September, it's come back up to normalize to almost exactly where it was last year. On page 60, I outline our firefighter turnout and response times, and this is all good news. We're averaging more than 15 firefighters per call, which is above our target. We're exceeding our NFPA rural standard target, and we're almost meeting our suburban target, which historically has been a challenge. If you look back at 2019, we were only hitting the mark 26% of the time, and we're up to 45, with a target of 50. Our response times are all at or within 14 seconds of our target, and in general, we're extremely happy with our firefighter turnout and ability to respond to calls. I've listed for you a number of significant incidents that occurred over the summer. All went very well. We did not experience any civilian or firefighter injuries, and in fact, my team absolutely, incredibly impressed me at a couple of structured fires where we had the fire under control within minutes of arrival and limited the damage to a fraction of what it could have been. This year, we really focused on training because we knew we weren't hiring a fire prevention officer, and we had some budget gapping. We set out to try and catch the department up on training initiatives that haven't been done in years past. So the number of hours of training we've done this year has been incredible. And some of it's very highly specialized training, like elevator rescue and water rescue. Within the training, you'll also see that we have placed our new self-contained breathing apparatus into service. That was one of the capital projects that was approved by council for 2020. They were purchased in May, and we trained hard over the summer, and they were placed into service at the end of September, after every firefighter had finished three totally separate modules of training. And then the last thing to bring to your attention is that we launched a residential smoke and carbon dioxide alarm inspection program. Obviously, it's a bit of a challenge. We would have preferred to have done it in the spring, when the weather's a little nicer and the light lasts a little bit longer, but the environment wasn't there, obviously, in April, May, June. So we went out two nights in September. We were received well, I think, by the public. We visited 83 homes, and this is, this is our volunteer firefighters giving up their Wednesday nights to go door-to-door. We visited 83 homes and did 67 inspections. That's the good news. The bad news is that the compliance was not what we had hoped. We left each of those 67 homes safe. We installed smoke alarms, we installed carbon dioxide alarms, we changed batteries, and we left them safe. What's a bit troubling, though, is the number of houses that we found not in compliance. So we're going to take that information, and we're going to build on that program. We're going to target public education, and we're going to make that program even stronger and more robust in coming years, because it is fairly clear that single-family dwellings and regular residential homes are not at the level of safety and compliance that we need as it relates to smoke and carbon dioxide alarms. So I'm happy to answer any questions on that first report, if any of you want me to.
Any questions from council? Counselor McKinnon, Shane McKinnon?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Chief, for your report. It's always nice to see how active the fire department is. I just, my only question is in regards to some of this calls to date for 2020, indication of 43 fire alarm activations. My question is, do you keep track of how many of those activations are in fact false alarms, and is there a remedy that you seek from those offenders?
Through the chair, excellent question. So those 43 would be false alarms? If we ended up arriving and it was a structured fire, it would, we would reclassify it, it would show in the structured fire category. So those are 43 false alarms. They range from everything from a child pulling a pole station to a smoke alarm set off by burnt dinner, where everything's functioning as it should, to alarm systems that frankly aren't being maintained to the right level. In terms of the remedy, we do have in our user fees the ability to charge people on a per-truck basis after the third false, third preventable false alarm, and there is some definition as to what preventable is. And we have begun charging one building that has been particularly problematic in terms of the number of alarms that it has generated. So we have taken that path, and it is a fairly extreme path to take because it is $485 per fire truck per hour. So it's a pretty significant fee. What we try and do, as we start noticing recurring false alarms, we inform the building owner that they may be susceptible to this fee and work with them to try and get the system fixed. But I mean, ultimately, you can only work with people for so long, and if they continue to occur, we apply the user fee. So thank you for that question. That's, so those 43 false alarms, though, they do range from a regular single-family dwelling right up to commercial industrial buildings, hospitals, long-term care homes, children pulling pole stations, elderly people pulling pole stations, happens in nursing homes, and it really runs the gamut of causes.
And of course, we want to encourage people to have alarms rather than discourage them through fines.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Fire Chief.
Counselor Bush?
Yes, through the chair. Thank you, Chief, for your report. It's always great to read through it, it's always very thorough. It's interesting to note that the second highest calls that you had in this last quarter are for open-air burning complaints, and that was the topic of discussion at our last council meeting, as you may recall. It just strikes me that obviously with that number of complaints, there's a broad concern across the community, and likely further reinforces the need for more awareness and education training, for one thing. And I know, Chief, that you and our CIO are looking further into that, and I look forward to what you're going to be bringing forward to council at some point down the road with respect to that. As I mentioned last time, there are communities across Canada and elsewhere that really suffered from major fires within their communities, Fort McMurray being the biggest Canadian example, and I know we all want to avoid those kind of things. But lastly, I just wanted to comment that it's great to see the ongoing training activities in the department. I know that's been a huge focus of yours since you got here, and great to see that that's ongoing. And again, I'm getting comments from people within the department and people who know some of your firefighters, how impressed they are at the level of training that they're currently receiving. So good news to you and your team for getting that done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, Chief Grimwood, I guess you can move on with your next report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There has been a lot of discussion over the past few council sessions referencing the 2015 Fire Marshal's Office report that I know I committed to tackling this year. So I felt that it now would be a good time to provide council with a bit of a comprehensive update on what we've done, what's outstanding, and what our timelines are. So I put together, I believe it's attachment to, a spreadsheet with what the recommendation was, our action to date, our target, our status and our target. We're very happy with what has been accomplished. There are some of these items that are going to spill into 2021, either because they have budget implications or it's simply due to workload, but in general, I feel like my staff and I have made good progress on this. I would just like to talk to a few of the items within the actual OFM report itself. Not having been here when the OFM did the audit and not having any staff still here from the time they did the audit, we're trying to play catch-up to a degree to try and connect exactly what the recommendation was to the operations of the department. So starting, I'm going to be referencing the page number of the actual OFM report. So on page three, the OFM, in the executive summary, did come to the conclusion that the City of Dryden is not compliant with the FPPA. So it was not a case of simply a report making some recommendations on improvement. The fact that they deemed us to not be compliant with the legislation is very concerning and leaves the city in with some risk and liability. On page eight of the Fire Marshal's Office report, they generalized that the evaluation team looked at our risk assessment, bylaws, agreements, and fire protection services provided. So you'll notice, both in tonight's report and what will be coming up, a lot of this is housekeeping about agreements and bylaws and policy and paperwork that every fire department's required to have in place. Getting into some of the operations and what they found, so on page 12 of the Fire Marshal's Office report, and this is more just to align with the staffing update I just provided, it should be noted that in 2015, the fire department, the Dryden Fire Service, had a total of 64 staff, including 61 volunteer firefighters. We're down right now to 45 staff and 40 volunteer firefighters, so we've reduced our total number of bodies by approximately a third. And that's not a bad thing, in my view. Right now, I'm content that the number of firefighters we have is serving the needs of the community, but it is just, it does resonate back that we're a leaner organization now than we were at the time of this report. On page 14, it outlines the various bylaws that a fire department should have, and so one of these is going to talk, speak to the item that councillor, councillor Bush just raised. Our current open-air fire burning bylaw is, in my view, it's very difficult to understand. I get, I get, I would say, on average, myself, about six or seven phone calls a week from the public, looking for clarification on what they can and cannot burn, and when they can and cannot burn, and I can only imagine my deputy and other staff get the same. So I mean, we're fielding at least a dozen calls a week, and I'm, I struggle to explain to somebody what the regulations are. So one of my primary commitments is to revise that bylaw to ensure that it covers everything that it has to cover in terms of the regulations, but that it's easier to understand and more user-friendly. I certainly agree with the approach of finding that balance between education and enforcement. My concern about leaning heavier towards the enforcement with the existing bylaw is it is so difficult for even the average person to understand, that we really do run into a lot of people that, that they're not trying to circumvent the bylaw, they honestly believe that they're within the regulations. So one of my key goals over the next couple of months is to rewrite that bylaw, and then I think once we have a better bylaw in place, then we can embark on a public education campaign, release the bylaw, make sure the public understands the rules and regulations behind burning, and then I'd feel more comfortable in terms of enforcement. In terms of the other bylaws, some of the things that you're going to notice over the next several months, in addition to the open-air bylaw, our bylaws regulating the handling, storage, and sale of fireworks, and fire root and fire access bylaws, those are two bylaws in the City of Dryden that have fallen well out of being moderned. So they are on our list of things to tackle and get to council. On page 16, the OFM report makes reference to a joint mill team, which talking to the firefighters was, it was something that may... firefighters was, it was something that may have been in practice, but it's not actually in principle anywhere. There is no agreement between the Dryden Fire Service and DOMTar. There are no policies that speak to it. It was just simply a practice of the day. Now, it is important to us, and it's, it's something that we're continuing to explore with DOMTar because it, it's a little bit, it's become a little gray over the years in terms of some of the equipment that DOMTar has that was purchased jointly with the city and, and some anomalies like that. So that's something that we're working to resolve because it's a real gray area, which again, leaves, leaves the city at risk if we don't actually have a formalized agreement and we try to operationalize it. On page 27, it speaks to how the Dryden Fire Service was managing fire safety inspections, how we were applying the fire code and following up on inspections. The Fire Marshal's Office was in fairness, very critical of the process. We have solved those issues. Deputy Chief Redmond is, is conducting our inspections totally in accordance with the training and direction of the Fire Marshal's Office, which is, which is in excellent shape currently and moving forward. The challenge is, there, there is a huge number of files that were never followed up on over the years that, that we're basically in a bit of a fresh start mode where, for example, there are buildings that the fire department entered in, in 2014, 15, 16, and they issued the owner of the property some direction to remediate violations of the fire code and then never returned to ensure that those were followed up on. They are, they are so old now, in our view, that we're just taking a fresh approach and we're going to have to start as though it's a brand new fire inspection and not rely on, on the old inspection report. So really what that, that means for us is, is managing our, our fire prevention workload and prioritizing which buildings need to be inspected on, at which frequency. And that's something that I'll also be bringing forward to council. There are other recommendations related to documentation, related to how inspections were documented, related to records retention. Deputy Chief Redmond has resolved those. Again, we are working in total compliance with the Fire Marshal's Office directives in terms of how we are enforcing the fire code and maintaining records. So that leads me then to the spreadsheet, which I've drafted and at risk of, of making it a significantly long night. At a, at a high level, I'm going to, my next report presents a new establishing and regulating bylaw that will take care of recommendations one and two. I have attached to this report a succession planning document that outlines what we've done in terms of succession planning. We take great pride in where we are now. And, and, and some of that is staff, but a lot of that is the volunteers as well. We have very, very strong captains who routinely step up into leadership roles. And then right behind them, we have very strong and experienced firefighters that could immediately step into a captain role. So I feel right now we have a solid succession plan and a lot of depth in place. But I never see succession planning as a one-time document. It's, it's an ongoing culture. The job descriptions, bylaws and agreements, I've outlined what our work plan is to get those done over the next couple of quarters. The item related to fire hydrants, there's been much discussion between the fire department and Public Works. And Public Works is going to, they're in the process of researching the best options for flow testing hydrants, whether that's something that's done in-house contracted out or a combination of both. So that's on their 2021 work plan. We've identified approximately 300 operating guidelines that are needed to keep firefighters safe and proficient. We've already drafted over 75 of those and we have a plan in place to finish them all by the end of 2021. I've spoken to records, management records, retention and inspections where Deputy Chief Redmond's done a phenomenal job of pulling all that together. Recommendation number 16 is, is a, it's a real challenge when the recommendation is that you ensure that all of your personnel are adequately trained. Because it doesn't speak to a specific, I mean, that's such a, a general broad statement. And it's, it's a, it's a requirement of all employers under the Occupational Health and Safety Act. So we set out to develop a training plan and a training program where we could really measure that and come back and feel comfortable saying to council, this is what we're doing and using to measure that. And so I, I've put a fairly large explanation there, but I guess for the, for the benefit of anyone else who may be listening, it's in comparison, in 2017 and 2018, there was approximately 800, 1,800 hours of training done each year. In 2019, that dropped to around 1,500 hours of training. And so far this year, we've done over 3,400 of hours of training and that was just at the end of August. We're going to end this year with over 5,000 hours of training. So we will have over tripled the volume of training that we did last year. And that's playing catch up. So that's not going to continue into 2021. In terms of budget impact, it's not sustainable. We offset the fire prevention officer salary this year that we weren't incurring. And we got ourselves well positioned and caught up on training where we can now move into a regular skills maintenance program. Public fire safety education is, is something we formalized. The residential smoke alarm program is recommendation 18. That's been done. Recommendation 20, the development of a workload management system. That's something in-house, we developed a work plan and, and my staff and I have very consistently stuck to a work plan that we developed at a, at a staff meeting in early January. We're going to look to revise that for 2021 and make sure that we're balancing new risks and, and our capacity to perform. Rules of evidence and work and fire cause and determination inspections, we're good there, we're good with the training plan. We've developed recommendation number 27. There was no proper program in place related to personal protective equipment. I've drafted that and attached it as appendix four. Recommendation 28 is to draft a respiratory protection program. That final draft is on my desk as we speak. That could be approved in the next few days. Recommendation 29, developing an exposure reporting system. That's been done and attached as appendix five. And then recommendation 30 was to develop this very type of tracking tool so that we didn't lose sight of these recommendations. And we committed to a target, providing council with regular updates so that we could measure our success. And, and frankly, it's, it's unfortunate that, that we're talking about a report that's five years old because if you establish targets, even if it's saying this won't be done until second quarter of 2021, as long as you make that target and hold yourself to it, you know, eventually, no matter how much work you have, it's going to get finished. So I believe that this document and summary has been helpful for my team and put us on a good path. I hope it's been helpful to the members of council to understand where we were, where we are now and where we look to, to be in the future. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council? Mayor Wilson?
Hi. Yes, I have an obvious question, I guess, from a council perspective.
Can we get everybody to mute their mics except for Mayor Wilson?
I'm sorry, there was some static. I missed that.
Can we get everybody to mute their mics except Mayor Wilson?
Okay, I'll try again. Are you good?
Perfect.
Great, thank you. So with those 30 recommendations for the OFM review, are there going to be any insurance premium reductions by completing all those recommendations? And that may not be a question for you, maybe that's more for our treasurer or CIO, but it's, I think we talked about that a few years ago.
Through the chair. So that's a good question. If, if you didn't experience any increases in the period following this 2015 report, then you're not likely to experience any reductions for completing this. If there was a noted increase in insurance as a result of this report, then I would assume completing these tasks would normalize that. It would, perhaps Roger or somebody with some history on this would be better positioned to talk about what types of impacts existed in 2015 and 16.
Go ahead, Roger.
Through the chair. I don't know of any impacts to our, our ratings back in that time period, Mayor Wilson. What I, what I know about the, the fire underwriters and ratings and, and insurance rates, I wouldn't anticipate any rate reductions for the work being done here. That would be my, my opinion.
Something to chat. Thank you.
Any other questions for Chief Grimwood? Counselor Bush?
Yes, thank you. Chief, thank you for this report tonight. It really has been a long time in coming to get to this level of quality of report. And I know it goes back, you can't change the past, you can only affect the future. But as you know, this report does go back to 2015. I don't believe council was aware of it until 2016, sometime in 2016. And when we did become aware of it, we had some pretty major concerns about where we were with respect to dealing with the issues because virtually all of the recommendations start off with the municipal council of the city of Dryden either shall insure or should insure, et cetera, et cetera. So obviously, there's a lot of accountability and responsibility on council's part, not to get into the operational aspects necessarily of putting the policies in place, et cetera. But certainly, we have a lot of the responsibility and accountability to ensure that those things are in fact being done on behalf of the city through the fire department. And so I'm, I'm very pleased tonight to see the amount of work that you and your team have put into this and that we've actually started dealing with these recommendations in a very meaningful and substantive way. I've always been uncomfortable in the past several years about where we actually were due to the variety of different reports coming back to us about where we actually were in the process, which was not as far along as we had hoped. So succession you mentioned is in place and hopefully with the right people that you've got in your organization that we can continue to polish off the rest of these recommendations and get into some solid footing. So I can tell you, your report on my behalf tonight has really eased my mind with respect to the due diligence that you're putting into this with your team and getting the city back on solid ground with respect to being where it needs to be from a compliance perspective. So I just wanted to thank you for those efforts and anything that we could do as a council, I'm sure will step up to the plate to help get this work completed in a timely fashion. So thanks again.
Thank you, Counselor Bush. Any other questions? Seeing none. I would, moving on.
Thank you. Through the chair, my final report tonight speaks to a new establishing and regulating bylaw, which it will resolve recommendations number one and two, but it will do much, much more for our fire department. As you can see, it's a 30-plus page bylaw, very comprehensive. Every municipal fire department in the province of Ontario operates under an establishing and regulating bylaw. It sets out the goals and objectives of the fire department, the organizational structure, the roles, responsibilities, the level of service and the working conditions under which our volunteer firefighters operate at minimum. It is important to note that I utilized the Fire Marshal's Office template for this. So this was done in accordance with the Fire Marshal's Office direction. It incorporates all of their regulatory and legislative requirements. It incorporates all of the requirements of the municipal act. It speaks to our current service. It has a modern organizational chart and it speaks to the level of service that we provide to the community. And most importantly, it also speaks to the level of service that we don't provide to the community. In, in and around 2014, 2015, there was a coroner's inquest held into fire fatalities that occurred in East Willimbury and Whitby, in the GTA. And one of the things that came out of that was that the residents of those municipalities were unaware of what level of service was and was not provided. And one of the recommendations of the coroner's inquest was that fire departments be totally transparent with the community about what we do and what we don't do. And that council is acutely aware of the level of service that we do and do not provide. Now that said, we do provide a high level of service in the city of Dryden. As an example, in our neighboring communities of Wabagun and Oxt drift, who are operated under the Northern Fire Protection Program, their regulatory bylaw, it's not a bylaw because they're not a municipality, but their regulatory documentation and level of service clearly says that they do not typically provide interior firefighting, that they're very clear with their residents that we fight fires from the exterior of a home where it's, it's less risk and requires less resources. So, you know, that's the type of transparency I was going for when it got into some of the detail about some of the technical rescue capability. Trench rescue is a good example. The Dryden Fire Service is not trained or equipped to perform a trench rescue. They're very rare. They happen a few times a year in Ontario. They're very dangerous. If somebody is caught in a trench cave-in, we are not trained or equipped to deal with it. And as just one example, what I don't want to happen is for there to be, after the fact, some type of suggestion that we weren't aware of, or council wasn't aware of, or did anybody know that the fire department didn't do this? So that's why I spent an awful lot of time in the report going over every possible type of emergency response and articulating exactly what our level of service is and what our level of service is not. And as part of that, I've made three recommendations to council where I'm looking, I guess what I'm looking for is I'm looking for council's direction about how much time and effort my staff and I put into researching what the difference would be, what the cost would be, what the impact would be, to move from where we are to where we could be as it relates to marine firefighting and incidents on the water, water and ice rescue and hazardous materials. And so just to give you a little bit of background on those, when I, when I arrived in Dryden, they are equipped with an inflatable water and ice rescue craft and flotation suits that allow the firefighters to go into the water and on the ice. What we couldn't find were any of the policies, procedures or guidelines, or the training records that would support that level of service. And it, it seemed to be a bit of a gray area, right? We do go into the water and on the ice. Sometimes some of us have some of the training, we have some of the equipment. It, it was, it was like they were half in, right? So that's one of my backgrounds. So I took the equipment they did have and I provided as much training as I can, but I'm still uncomfortable. And as, as, so to, to kind of resonate it, where Counselor Bush said he was uncomfortable with the OFM report, I'm similarly uncomfortable with our level of service as it relates to water and ice rescue because we have some of the training and we have some of the equipment, but we don't have everything you would typically have. And the same relates to hazardous materials. And I, I believe this is the genesis of this mill, joint mill team. DOMTar has a hazardous materials trailer where they have Level A and Level B hazardous material suits and decontamination equipment and spill containment equipment that we don't have. From what I've been able to learn, that equipment at some point was either jointly purchased or jointly operated between DOMTar and the city, but there are no actual agreements in place. And there's been enough change- And there's been enough change of leadership in both organizations that we're pretty unclear about the actual availability of that equipment to us in the event of an emergency. So hazardous materials is the other area where I believe that the public is expecting a higher level of service than we can currently deliver because of the equipment and training that we have. So those are two areas, and honestly, that's not too bad. I've done establishing and regulating bylaws where there's a huge discrepancy in level of service expectations and delivery. Based on my analysis, those are the two areas where there's a gap between what I believe people believe we're doing, what we're equipped and trained to do, and what we could actually provide. So I am looking in those instances in recommendations 1.4, 1.5, and 1.6 for some direction from council about whether you wish me to continue to research what it would take to get us from point A to point B, knowing that there will inevitably be budget implications, not necessarily in 2021. It could be research that's done through 2021 and decisions made towards the end of the year. If there isn't the political will to make level of service changes, if there isn't the feeling that there is a gap, then that's fine as well. But then that would save me and my staff the time to do that research to bring back to council. So in those areas, I'm looking for some council direction as it relates to the bylaw itself. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you, Rob.
I think, Rob, can you turn your mic off again? Counselor Shane McKinnon, I think you had your hand up?
Yes, thank you, manager. Thanks again, Chief, for your report. I do, when you are making this determination under the direction of council, you'll be looking at the traditional jurisdictions of water, ice, rescue, marine, rescue, and intervention, I assume. And I believe in the training. I think the training is great. It creates an exposure for your people. It creates portable skills. It speaks to things to do with mutual aid. But will it be an expectation of folks in our community if you keep that training up as you have to date? So that's my question, I guess, is will this include a jurisdiction? And the cost ultimately, you made reference to watercraft in your report, and certainly there's a cost that goes along with just having that equipment at your disposal.
Thank you, through the chair. So right now, we have a boat that inflates with a cylinder of air, and it is limited to a range of around between 1,800 and 2,200 feet. It's a boat that's tied off with a piece of rope, and it's paddled out by firefighters onto water. Where if they're on ice, it's physically walked out. So if there was a boating accident, somebody fell off a boat, a boat started to sink, there was a float plane crash, I mean, I hate hypothesizing these, you know, potential incidents, but if there was anything on water greater than 2,500 feet from the shore, we would not be in a position to respond. And that's not abnormal. Kenora and Fort Francis have boats. Red Lake and Sioux Lookout don't. Some municipalities do and some don't. And frankly, I've been in a fire chief in ones that do and ones that don't. I don't really advocate for one over the other as much as I advocate that everyone's on the same page and we know that our fire department can't go more than 2,500 feet into the water. And if there is some sort of an incident or a tragedy, it was a conscious decision that was made. It was a conscious policy decision rather than some gray area or agreement that was never come to or a report that was never produced. So I don't know whether that answers the question. In terms of jurisdiction, yes, it would be a level of service specific to the city of Dryden. There is nothing in our mutual or automatic aid agreements that would compel us to provide that service to any other municipality. We did speak to the OPP detachment commander. He indicated that they have a boat, but they do not have flotation suits and they do not have the training. So their staff would not enter into water onto ice. And the challenge with their boat is that they would have to recall OPP officers who are out on the roads and patrolling back to the detachment to hook up the boat to inevitably get it to where it needs to go. So in terms of the timeliness of response, it's probably not within that window where it's a rescue. It's more likely unfortunate at that point to be into a recovery.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Bush? Norm, could you turn your mic on, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, through the chair. Thanks, Michelle. Thank you for the report, Chief. Yeah, similar questions would crop up in my mind with respect to, you know, the frequency of marine fires and is it, you know, frequent enough to warrant providing some sort of a service board or, you know, or would we simply have, and these are questions, or would we simply have training that never gets exercised in reality and equipment that just sits there essentially unused except for training exercises? And if we have had some marine fires, where did they occur and what a reasonable response from a fire department have made a difference? I mean, those are all questions in my mind with respect to whether we should or shouldn't get involved in developing that capability and ongoing training for the fire department. And does that mean we staff up for, in some of these other cases, for things that may never happen or could or should be had by others such as hazardous materials? You know, for example, if the mill has its own hazardous materials handling procedures and suits and processes, training in place, coupled with what they do with their suppliers of these goods, do you need a municipal response as well that's fully capable? Or do you need something just that's a standby to contain it with a much lesser degree of training? So those are questions that come to my mind with respect to things that I'd like to hear more about before I'd be comfortable to be in a position to help support a decision one way or the other.
Thank you, through the chair. Those are the types of details that would be produced in a report. We would look at frequency and call volume, how often these have occurred, and what the consequences are. I can tell you preliminarily, I recommended in the E and R bylaw against things like confined space rescue and trench rescue and silo and farm and mine incidents because the frequency would not be there. It would be an investment in training and equipment that would hardly ever, if ever, be utilized. With water and ice rescue and hazardous materials, though, the frequency seems to be enough to at least warrant the discussion, if not the decision. In terms of water and ice rescue, the firefighters who have served for a while can relate back to some calls involving water and some involving ice. And the big challenge is that there's nobody else in the area to do it. My last department, we had a high frequency of these calls and we still didn't do it. We contracted it out to another fire department that was very close just because we felt there would be some redundancy in service. The challenge here is if we don't perform water and ice rescue, nobody else will. Now, that said, the point about hazardous materials and perhaps it's something we do come to a formal partnership with Domtar, that would be worth the discussion with Domtar. I don't know how it would impact their operations if their staff had to leave their property to provide service outside of Domtar and to the municipality. I don't know whether it would have any implications in terms of their operations, but it would be a discussion worth having.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mayor Wilson?
Hi, thank you. I thought I should chime in here. I really appreciate all of your reports, Chief, and this last one, I really think it's worthwhile looking at 141516. I mean, let's kind of figure out where the goalposts are, get an assessment, and it's just a step, I think, that is important. We're surrounded by some bodies of water, and we need to know, to assess our ability to respond and make sure people are aware of that level of service that we can provide. And this will work towards that end, so thank you.
Seeing none? So I guess Chief Grimwood is looking for some direction towards the recommendations that he has been talking about for training for water and ice rescue, as well as the hazardous waste training, or hazardous material training, I should say. Do we want him to move forward with more steady, or do you want? And I need some mics turned on. Go ahead, Roger.
Through the chair, I think what I'm hearing is that council would like some more information on those three questions that Chief Grimwood had outlined in his report. Is that correct, council?
Yes.
Okay. We will take that as an action item. Chief, is there anything else that you require coming out of this report?
There is not. This will come back before council, the next council meeting as a bylaw. And then once approved, it'll replace the previous establishing and regulating bylaw, and then we will build upon this to continue tackling the other recommendations from the OFM report.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Moving on, I would like to ask Mr. Lance Delro to present his staff reports. Stephen?
Good evening, everyone. My first staff report this evening is a 357 application. The recommendation out of this report is that council accepts my recommendation for approval of the 357 application that's listed below. There's only one property encompassing in this report. And in 357, there's multiple reasons why the relief would be provided, and this relates to 357-1A where the property or a portion of the property is eligible to be reclassified in a different class of real property, and in this case, it's commercial to residential. So if there's any questions, I'll take them now.
Any questions? Counselor Bush?
Yes, through the chair. Thanks, Stephen. Just one question. When you talk about commercial to residential, is that in the downtown area or some other area of town?
I'm not exactly, I did provide the, I provided the roll number. I didn't provide the address, the physical address. I believe that this property is close to downtown, but not in the downtown core. And there was a portion of the property that was commercial, and then a portion that was residential, and there was renovations done. So the commercial component is now switched to residential, so the whole property is now residential.
Okay, so that was done some time ago, then?
The work would have been completed prior to January 1 of 2020.
Great. Yeah, the purpose of my question, again, through the chair, and I don't know how my colleagues feel about this, but over the past, I'd say, three, four, five years or so, I've had several business people who have businesses express concerns that our downtown core and downtown core areas are becoming more and more residential with less and less business space available. And if we're trying to encourage businesses to move into the downtown area, they're concerned with there's less and less opportunity. So I don't know how we manage that going forward, or if it's a concern or not, but to the rest of council, but it would be good to get a good sense in my mind of how much business space we actually do have versus what we had, say, four or five years ago. And are we slowly going to get ourselves into a position where we really don't have much opportunity for new businesses to start up? And if that's the case, we'll let hamper our downtown revitalization thoughts going forward. So that's my only concern. If this is already a done deal, then it's a done deal, but I would have that ongoing concern, I guess, going forward.
Stephen, do you have a response? No?
Well, I mean, we do have zoning bylaws within our municipality that dictate what properties are going to be where, and council has control about whether or not we want, you know, to limit the amount of residential in our downtown core. I know, I mean, you look at municipalities across the country, there's a component of residential downtown, and I know a lot of businesses appreciate that because then it provides, you know, clientele that are, don't have to travel very far to go to those businesses.
Go ahead, Roger.
Through the chair, if it's council's direction, staff can bring forward some information pertaining to Counselor Bush's comments. Again, if it's council's direction, if they're interested in some of that information.
I would definitely be interested. Fellow councilors, your thoughts? John, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I don't have any feedback, but I don't know, I think with residents being downtown, this opens up a new opportunities, different opportunities if somebody wants to look at different business models. I mean, these people are there, they're capital audiences, and I think it's, whether we bring some before or not, I don't know if we do that or not, but just more work for staff. I think it's just a change that, you know, maybe that's the way it's going, I think it just adds different opportunities for people to open different businesses. That's all. That's my thought.
Any other comments? Counselor Bush?
Yes, well, my, just through the chair, as long as we go into this with our eyes wide open in terms of what may or may not happen downtown, but I still feel a little bit stung, I guess, by a development that happened not very long ago downtown whereby somebody was asked to have a building converted, and part of that building was going to be commercial and part of that building was going to be residential. Well, the commercial portion turned out to be two coin-operated laundry machines for the residents in the building and not available to the public. And you can walk by that thing every single day. And so if I had more confidence in the overall direction that we were going and some level of control through our bylaws, I'd feel a lot better about it. But we weren't stung by that very long ago. And it's still very annoying to have had that misrepresentation to council presented a few short years ago, only to find out that it's a 100% residential building that was totally misrepresented to council. So that commercial opportunity is not there in that building. And so are we just going to back into no more commercial business space, or are we actually going to have a plan and a better methodology of ensuring we know what's going on with our downtown from a development perspective? I'm not against residential, but I am for understanding what the heck's going on.
Thank you, Counselor Bush. Any other comments before we move on? Counselor Marty McKinnon?
Yeah, I would agree with that. We have to be able to control that issue. We just can't have people popping in and creating a mini-business so they can have the residential property with our condolences, with our permission. So I think we have to really watch that.
Thank you. I'm in agreement. I think that it's a matter of protecting, maybe when you look at the downtown core and you, in particular, there's a lot of businesses that have residential on top where it's a 50/50 split, and you're protecting the business below or the space for probable business to happen. And I do respect and think that we should have residential downtown to
have residential downtown to some degree, but certainly not where it's turning a complete commercial building into a residential space, therefore taking away the opportunity for a new business to come into place. It, it will diminish our, our downtown fairly quickly, I would imagine, if that were the case. You know, and I also understand that, you know, that's the chance you take when you buy business buildings and, you know, trying to sell them and the opportunity to sell it, to turn it in to someone who wants to turn it into a residential, or the person itself not being able to find a succession for, for their business to want to turn it into residential as well. So I get both sides of the coin, being a business owner myself, but I do think that for our future downtown core, outside of even my own business, that we need to be aware of what is going on in, in the core so that businesses don't, or the opportunity for new business doesn't disappear completely. Counselor Shane McKinnon, you, yep.
Hi, thank you, Madam Chair. I need to chime in after your, your spoke, but, well, I mean, the simple truth is that we're short of housing in, in our community, and people are looking at rental units, they're trying to find places to live. Quite often, the downtown core provides housing at a reasonable price. I don't want to see all the businesses turned into residential areas either, but I, I think if, if we're going to look at that, or we're going to look at our zoning, if we're interested in making some changes that will restrict that even further, I think it's incumbent upon us to also look at the housing problem that we have in the community, people who are coast surfing, people who are, you know, trying to find housing anywhere they can. And I think that we really need to look at that problem in conjunction with other issues related to accommodation in the community. That's my two cents.
Thank you, Shane. And I do appreciate your comments as well. I, I'm very well aware of the lack of housing in our community, as I somehow inherited a website that says Dryden Apartment Rentals on it, and I get phone calls all the time, two to three a day sometimes, on people looking for apartments or just a place to live. So I do recognize that there is a shortage of housing in our community, and I know it's something that we're working on, trying to find a fix for that, for sure. It's not something that sits in the back of our minds. We, we know very well that there is a shortage in this town. And hopefully, we can find, you know, a good fix to that problem. Go ahead, Roger.
Through the chair. So staff can bring forward a bit of an educational staff report on, on this topic. And then just a note from an official plan standpoint, we will be looking to conduct an official plan update in 2021. We are due next year to, to conduct that exercise. So that'll be coming forward as part of, part of the budget proposal.
Thank you. Are there any more questions before we move on? Counselor, or sorry, Mayor, Mayor Wilson?
Yeah, I'm a counselor too.
Yeah.
So I, I have mixed feelings on this as well, because, let's face it, if you're an owner of a building and you find that you don't have the customer base anymore, and you think, well, I, but I need a place to live, and I've already got this building, I wouldn't mind converting it to residential, then I think that's good. I don't, correct me if I'm wrong, Stephen, but this is just somebody going from commercial to wanting to go to residential, and they're not looking as a, at apartment complex or anything like that? It's just a personal residential?
This conversion has already taken place. To be honest with you, with 357 adjustments, this is not, this is not council approving the project. The project has already been completed. It's the same thing as 357s are, you know, the garage was burnt down, and MPAC, you know, they file, they file for relief under 357 to provide relief. At the end of the day, MPAC will be adjusting this property to be fully residential. The 357 is, I don't want to say a rubber stamp, because council, in the, in the legislation, it says council may. There is the word may, not shall. So council could deny this application, but they would then appeal it and be successful. So, so really, the project has been completed. This commercial space is no longer commercial space, it's residential, and they've, they've applied the 357 for 2020.
Thank you. Mayor Wilson?
Yeah, thanks, Stephen. And, and I, I mean, I understand that, and I, I think it's rubber stamp, and my assumption was, yes, this is going to go through. And just while everybody was sort of chiming in on their opinions, I, I just felt it wasn't really worthwhile. But as the conversation progressed, I think it's, it's, it's important for people to know that, that Dryden has undergone, undergone the same kind of changes over the last 20, 25 years, as so many other communities with kind of the Walmartization of, of small-town Canada. So that puts building owners in a different position. And so for something like this in the future, in terms of policy, I think, you know, let them, let them convert commercial to residential, it's, it seems to make sense.
And through the chair, this, this property, if it was in our downtown, downtown commercially zoned, if, if the property owner wanted to do a conversion, that would have to be brought forward to council for approval, because we have our zoning bylaw. So any, 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 not amendments to the bylaw, but Roger, can you help me with the wording? If a property owner wanted to deviate from, from the zoning bylaw, that council would have to approve that? Am I correct in that assumption?
If it's a deviation from the bylaw, you're correct.
So council does have that control with our, with our downtown core, or actually anywhere in industrial, like zones of our, of our community that are industrial, zones in our community that are, that are residential, that you would like to add a, a commercial component. All of those things can happen with council's approval.
Thank you, Stephen. So with that, I believe Stephen is looking for a motion of approval.
No, not a motion, it would just, it would just be at the, is it a motion, or?
Yes, it is a motion, Stephen.
Okay, so a motion next, the council meeting?
Yes, that's correct. There would be a motion coming forward on the 26.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I guess you can move on to your next report.
All right. My next report relates to the municipal accommodation tax. I just wanted to provide council with an update of where we're standing with regards to that revenue. And I provided a little chart for council to, to review. And you can see that in January, we were below our targeted levels. This is primarily due to any, any bookings that were made prior to the tax being implemented and paid would be exempt. So we did have quite a bit of accommodations that were, were booked and paid for prior to January 1 of 2020 that occurred in, in January. So, so it wasn't unexpected that we would be below the targeted levels. And then, as you can see, in February, we were pretty much there. And then COVID hit. So in March through May, you can see the impact that COVID had on the municipal accommodation tax and the corresponding drop in, in occupancy at our local accommodators. We, we did have a slight recovery in, in June and July, and, and I think that was a lot of local travelers or regional travelers, maybe a few from Manitoba, as well as that was getting right into the construction season. So I think that really helped our local accommodators, was that the construction that was deemed to be necessary and exempt for, or wasn't impacted by the COVID shutdowns benefited our local accommodators, and correspondingly benefited the community. But, but we're still under our targeted levels, and I do believe that we're going to be probably around $33,000 under the level by the end of the year. So this, this is going to have an impact, and, and I believe that it's going to carry forward into 2021, especially when we talk about some of the hockey tournaments and, and, and those kind of things that aren't going to be taking place this year due to COVID, or that might spread into the January, February, the first quarter activity. My hope is that at some point, we're back to normal, some, some level of normalcy in 2021, but there still is that, that large unknown. And, you know, the, the border being closed and when that's going to reopen as well will, will impact this. But I did want to provide council with an update. It could have been a lot worse. This represents around 15%, just over 15% drop from targeted levels. So not, not too bad, all things considered. But this, this report is basically just for information purposes.
Thank you, Stephen. Mayor Wilson?
Yeah, just a comment, Steve, through the chair. That $178,000 be of good share council and city of Dryden, that's all found money. So it'll go up, that's great, but it's found money.
I agree. Any other comments? Seeing none? So that was just for information, and we're moving on to staff report for the MAT agreement.
Right. So along the same lines, the recommendation coming from this staff report is that council authorized the mayor and acting clerk to sign an agreement with the Dryden Chamber of Commerce, being an agreement, agreement in accordance with the transient accommodation tax regulations. But I won't get into the background, but with regards to the discussion, the legislation requires municipalities share a portion of the revenues with an eligible tourism entity. Revenues shared with an eligible tourism entity must be used for the exclusive purpose of promoting tourism. The regulation also requires municipalities and tourist entities to enter into an agreement that deals with reasonable financial accountability matters to ensure that amounts paid to the entity are used for the exclusive purpose of promoting tourism. The amount of, to be shared, because any municipality that had previously had a destination marketing program, they were, the legislation said that whatever the percentage that they were sharing under that arrangement needed to be maintained. For municipalities that didn't have destination marketing programs, it needed to be 50%. So we did not have a destination marketing program, so we must share 50% of the revenues with an eligible tourism entity. This agreement is in accordance with the regulations and, and will advance the city as a tourist destination by supporting and promoting local events, initiatives, and infrastructure that brings people to the city. That is the goal of this agreement, is to have people come to the city of Dryden, staying in our hotels, shopping at our restaurants and stores, using our facilities, and benefiting the community overall.
Thank you.
Any questions with regards to the agreement? Oh, and I just wanted also to comment that locally, the Dry, the Dry, the Dryden Chamber of Commerce is really the only local party that we could enter into without having to create something new.
Thank you, Stephen. Counselor Shane?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Stephen, for the, the report. And I'm looking at the, the agreement, and now I may be missing something here, and I hope you can point it out to me, but the way I read this agreement is that 4% is what we're collecting on the entire MAT tax. And this agreement says that we are putting that 4% to this body, I guess, the Chamber of Commerce. And if you can, I, I can't find in there where it says 50% of the 4%. It says 4% total, unless I'm missing a line here.
No, it just, it just says whereas the city has implemented a municipal accommodation tax in the amount of 4% of the purchase price?
Yes. And then where does it go on to say 50% of that will be given to this group?
It's under the fees.
Fees are, are, what I, I'm thinking that's how much it costs to administer this thing. I'm sorry, I just can't find it. I don't know if the other counselors feel the same, but I looked through it a couple times, and I can't see the line where it says only 50%. And believe me, I think we should keep the other 50%, so.
No, that's a good point, Counselor McKinnon. I'll make that amendment. It would actually be not in the fee section, it would be in the funds. So it would be Section 1.1.4. So funds shall mean the monies collected by means of the tax, including all interest and penalties. We should actually say that funds for this, the purpose of this agreement are 50% of the monies collected. That's a very good point. I'll make that amendment.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions on the, the MAT agreement? Seeing none? I believe we will have a bylaw coming forward on the 26. Moving on, Stephen?
Well, I, I'll just make a comment that accompanying that bylaw will be an amended report with Counselor Shane.
Oh, thank you. Yes. Make note of that one. Thank you. So moving forward, Stephen, you're up again?
Yep. My next staff report is an amendment to the 2020 budget. Again, I don't want to get into too much of the, the background or the discussion here, but at, at the end of the day, we, we have a problem area within our, our water distribution system. We've had many breaks over the past few years in this area, and another one that occurred in 2020. So we decided to take corrective, corrective action on this, on this issue, and, and actually add to our capital plan. Now, this addition to our capital plan will not have any impact on the bottom line, like the city's contributions to our plan, as this is eligible under the federal gas tax funding. This project would be eligible under that, that grant. And, and it's not new money drawn from the plan, because as, as council recalls, I believe we've, we've communicated this in my Q2 financial report, that there was some, the possibility that we were not going to be doing some of the surface, the rural surface-treated road project this year, as we were not able to, or we're having difficulty finding a contractor to do that work. Well, it turned out that we could not do the work in 2020, because we just didn't have a contractor to do it. So that freed up $80,000 that was targeted from federal gas tax funding for that project, and we're utilizing 70K for this Swanson Creek water main project. So it's actually, we're saving $10,000 that we had originally committed under the federal gas tax overall for 2020. But we're pretty happy, and we're using technology in Dryden for this Swanson Creek project that we hadn't used before by using directional drilling to get under the creek and replacing that section of water main. So in the long run, this will save us, it'll save us operating dollars from having to continue to go to this, this area to address those water main breaks that we were having.
Thank you, Stephen. Any questions? Seeing none? So I believe there is a bylaw that will be brought forward to the October 26 meeting as well. Once again, Stephen, you're up.
All right. My second-to-last staff report this, this evening relates to the 2021 user fees and charges. The recommendation out of this staff report is that council approves the recommended user fees and charges effective January 1, 2021, and that council approves bylaw 477-2020 to amend the fees and charges schedules accordingly. So I'm assuming that council reviewed the, the schedules, and you'll, you'll note that if the fee had changed, it's in that proposed new fee section. If there's no change, then that would be blank. But obviously, when, when the bylaw gets put together, the schedules will have just the 2021 fees noted. And I also want to add that, that the departments did put a lot of work into this. There was a lot of review. There was a lot of benchmarking comparisons that were, that were done. And I believe that, you know, the, the proposed fees and charges are appropriate and adequate.
Any Counselor Wilson, or Mayor Wilson? My apologies.
Great. Thanks through the chair, Stephen. I just noticed the the one that jumped out on me about the the fee increases was the, it was the parking permits and it's like they almost doubled. I was just wondering what the logic was there for that.
Well, so, so, oh, just a second, sorry, I apologize. Lower, I did a regional benchmarking comparison and we are also implementing in 2020 a new parking software that will actually be able to monitor and and I don't want to use the word police, but enforce our existing parking bylaw. And that technology is going to enable downtown parkers to purchase hourly, hourly rates. So you'll get, our bylaw has two hours of free parking, but if you wanted to park it for three hours, you could use, use the the new software and and purchase the additional hour. So when when I looked at the regional comparators that had hourly parking, the hourly parking was usually a dollar, some was a dollar 25 per hour. Our our previous day parking rates were $2.50. So if you have somebody who's parking for the day, let's say it's a, an employee of a downtown business and they're parking on the street for, let's say, eight hours, if you were to use the the new software, that would cost you $6, but our day rate in our municipal parking lot would be 250. So there was a disconnect there. So I had to kind of work backwards from that that hourly rate, using the benchmark analysis that a dollar an hour is, seems to be the going rate in in the region or in 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 Northwestern Ontario. As well, the benchmark, benchmarking work that I completed, looked at annual parking permits, and there's not a lot. Usually it's just hourly, but there were some regional comparators that had upwards of $600 a year for an annual parking permit. So I actually originally was going to have the day rate and the monthly rate and the annual rate even higher than the proposed that presented to you this evening. But like you said, it's quite a significant increase from what our residents are used to. So I had a conversation with Roger and Roger then, you know, maybe take a look at this and and see what's more reasonable. Now, I am also in the, in the works of developing a, a user fee policy. And that user fee po, policy will be looking at cost of delivering services. So I look at this as a stepping stone leading us, leading us into the future, that this seems reasonable, these proposed fees for parking. They are under the regional comparators and it will prepare us for moving forward when that policy is implemented and we're actually looking at cost of delivering service, full full service costs, which included the capital maintenance of our parking lots and our city streets and whatnot, in establishing those fees. Now, council can always subsidize fees, so maybe they want to, if, you know, through that work, we determine that the fees should be increased by 20%, council could say no, hold the line and we'll subsidize those fees. But I just, number one, it was through benchmarking work, seeing, seeing what's fair. I think day parking at $2.50 was extremely low, especially when you look at what's out there in the Northwestern Ontario region.
Thank you. Any questions on that? Can you turn your mic off, Stephen?
Off.
Thank you. Counselor Bush?
Yes, thank you. Thanks for your report, Stephen. A question, I guess, I had, I was having trouble with seeing a couple of these things, but what's the total increase in city revenues forecast for 2021 over 2020 budget due to the fees and charge increases as an aggregate? Do you have that number available?
No, I I don't, Counselor Bush, through the chair, I don't, because we're still in the development of our 2021 operating budget. And and the challenge is, as you can see, in in some cases, areas that did implement, implement increases in the fee may or may not have residual impacts related to the COVID pandemic as well. So it might be that we have a slight uptick in the fees related to the actual charge, but then we have a drop in utilization. So overall, it's a drop in revenue projected for 2021. And again, for parking, it's, you know, we haven't been enforcing our municipal bylaw, so we're now going to be enforcing it, but it's very challenging to know what that's going to mean for our municipal lots and for downtown parking. So we'll be doing a very high level estimate for 2021 and and that full year of enforcement will, and and utilization will determine any budget amendments for for future years.
Yeah, I mean, it would be, it would be interesting to know on a normalized year basis what the, what those increases would result in. Couple other questions, I guess. First of all, it's good to see the airport fee structure going up, and I presume there's a lot of benchmarking that's gone into that.
Exactly.
But just, it's a small item and it's not a big deal, but I'm just wondering why we're in the business of selling Canadian and Ontario flags. I get the city flag bit, but I mean, you can go pick up these flags at Canadian Tire. This seems like one other activity that you'd sort of question whether we need to be in that business or not.
Yeah, and and it's funny that you're, through the, through the chair, it's actually funny that you're mentioning that, Counselor Bush, because internally, we actually had a very similar, similar discussion. And I think it's because we have stock of those items that if we have stock and somebody comes to the counter and is interested in purchasing them because of historical practice, it's important for us to actually maintain the fee so that we have the appropriate charge. If we did, if we remove the fee, then basically we have to give the the existing stock away or what do we do with that existing stock? So I think at some point in time, once we no longer have any inventory of those items outside of the City of Dryden flags, then we can remove this from the fee charge schedule.
Okay, that that sounds good. You might want to put while available on there or something, but.
Yeah.
We'll have to compare your cost with Canadian Tire.
Thank you, Counselor Bush. Counselor Shane?
Yes, Stephen, I just wonder if you have any orange town of Dryden flags left?
That would be a question for Allison, and I believe we do.
They're very expensive. They're relics. Moving forward, I believe we will also have a bylaw ready for October 26 to pass that through. And then, sorry, my screen went blank. And one last one, I believe, Stephen?
Yep. Sorry for taking all this time of years, but it's been a busy month for me. My last staff report is an amendment to the reserve, reserve fund policy. The recommendation is that council approves the revised reserve and reserve fund policy. There's really four recommended amendments to the reserve fund policy. One is establishing reserve targets. Two is a reporting section amendment. So if council agrees to the reserve targets, I would like to then report how we're doing against those targets on an annual basis. And then number three is if we establish a reserve, operating reserve target, then I need to amend the upper limit of our general operating reserve. And then the last one really doesn't have anything to do with targets, but it's in line with our strategic plan and 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 I'm recommending the creation of a waterfront development reserve fund that would be populated by the municipal accommodation tax revenues that we generate. So I provided, with regards to establishing reserve targets, I provided a little bit of information and we can make this extremely complex if we wanted to. We can, we can do risk analysis and we can, we can quantify that and and establish targets based on those. But that would be time consuming and and internally, we don't have the resources that are the expertise to do that work. So we would be looking at incurring an additional cost just to establish these targets. So I took a different approach and I used our our strap plan as the basis of that. And our, and our strategic plan talks about, one of the the goals is fiscal sustainability and an identified priority of increasing our reserves. So having targets or a goal that is higher than our current levels aligns very well with that, that priority. But when you're looking at fiscal sustainability, there's, there's certain ratios that 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 are standard ratios from a financial perspective that will show whether an organization is, is, how they're doing financially. And and comparing reserves and reserve funds to sole, sole source revenue is is a common ratio. And values over 50% are deemed to be strong indicators of financial stability. So I I I thought that that fit very well and it's easily calculated for our perspective. So when I look at our our reserves, and I wanted to separate water and sanitary sewer out separately, so then all all the other reserve funds, I pooled them together and and said that the the goal should be 50% of our property tax revenue. So we generate around $14.5 million annually in property taxes. This is based on, on the 2020 budget. So 50% of that would be 7.25 million. Currently, in our discretionary reserve funds outside of water and sewer, we have, we had a year-end 2019 balance of 3.9 million. So that represents a $3.3 million shortfall. But again, it's really the target. It's it's trying, it's the, it's establishing that target of 7.25 million and and having a plan, and it doesn't need to be short term, it can be a long term plan to to get to that targeted level. So it's it's really in the forefront that the decisions that council makes and the city makes from a financial perspective has that target in mind. And then with regards to water and sewer, again, you using water, own source revenue and and sanitary and wastewater own source revenue, they both generate around 2.3 million. As you can see, our our year-end balances in those reserve funds were, were very, very modest, so the the shortfall from a percentage perspective, perspective is substantial. But I thought that that using, using those, that that ratio of reserve funds over own source revenue and having that 50% be the basis was was good for our purposes and and for a municipality of of our size. And then, and then on the operating side, we do have a few operating reserves. We have the election reserve, museum reserve, Aaron Park, emergency capital and general operating. So I looked at the general operating being the relevant reserve that is an unrestricted fund balance that's set aside to stabilize our finance, our finances, providing a cushion against unexpected events, whether that's, you know, a revenue loss related to a pandemic or an unbudgeted expense due to some sort of an emergency or some, something of that nature. And then, so you look at, you look at, you know, some standards or benchmarking of how organizations establish targets for for operating reserves, and and it can be as small as one pay cycle. So what your payroll cost would be for one cycle to as high as two years' full operating expenses. I didn't want to, I didn't think that it was prudent for us to go as low as one pay cycle, and I don't think that for a municipality our size and our and our financial means, that trying to have a target of of two, two years of operating expenses, I thought that was substantial. And there's always the question of how much is too much? And when you're talking about taxpayers' dollars, a lot of times these reserves are going to be used in future years, and we're using current taxpayers' dollars to build up these reserves, and future taxpayers are going to benefit by that. And so there is a fine line of of having your targets too high. So I thought that as a starting point at least, that we establish two months of our annual payroll expenditures as the target, and that would equate to 1.98 million for our operating reserve. And again, so on the reporting that, that if if we, if council is acceptable to establishing reserve funds targets and this new section of our of our policy, that on the reporting side, that I would be included in my year-end financial report, a comparison of of our reserves to our targeted levels, and that if council is open to the target level on our general operating reserve, that we establish an upper limit that at least can encompass that, that threshold. And then the last one again is waterfront development, and this is just in alignment with our strategic plan, and it provides a source of funding for whatever that means. And again, this could be anything from direct city expenditures, it it could be from private public partnerships, it could be land purchases that is along the waterfront, adjacent to city-owned properties. There really, I'm not, I'm, I'm, at this point in time, I'm not saying how those funds would be used, but if waterfront development is a strategic priority for the city, then I think that it's prudent that we actually have funds available to go towards that, that priority and that strategy. So I open up any, any questions?
Any questions from council? Counselor Shane McKinnon?
Thank you. I just, you talked about, I guess, well, it's 2020, so anything can happen. But when you, when you do these comparisons and the contingencies to to illustrate this to us in a little more depth down the road, will you hold this up against a total suspension of all municipal grants, both provincially and federally? Because in the, in the back of my mind, I'm thinking with the COVID funds that are available, the provincial and federal government are going to have to withdraw funds somewhere. So that would leave us in a position where we would be rethinking our, our reserves that we have now rather than looking to expand them. But would that be a formula or a consideration that you would use?
Well, 100%, and that's why I said the timelines are 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 not necessarily immediate, Counselor McKinnon, in that the target is a, is a goal. So we're always going to be working towards achieving these targets, but there's going to be periods of time, and it could be various factors. It could be reductions in in higher levels of government funding for infrastructure that that it's necessary for us to to draw in our existing reserves, creating a larger gap to the target. But then, once things recover and we're in a position where we can start adding to the reserves again, that we would then be building them up, trying to to reach these targeted levels. Conversely, there's going to be times where we actually want to exceed these targeted levels, and and the best example I can think of is our water treatment plant. So we had a recent condition assessment that it says if we invest modestly into that facility, that it, that it will be able to treat our water for a decade or two, but there's going to become a period of time where we have to replace that water treatment plant. And it's going to be a substantial cost, and our target, like the proposed targeted level for for the water reserve is, is, is less than 1.2 million dollars. So it might be from a financial strategy for the long-term capital plan perspective that we actually want to exceed that maybe even tenfold, that we're, over the next 15 years, we want to get that up to $10 million, knowing that we're going to have a large capital spend down the road, and and we want to minimize the amount of debt that that's incurred related to that project. So there's going to be times, I think, that we're, that there's a gap to the target, but there may be times where, from a long-term financial perspective, we're there may be times where from a long-term financial perspective, we're actually above the targeted level.
Thank you. Any other questions or Roger as a comment? Go ahead, Roger.
Through the chair, yeah, just, just to add to, uh, the treasurer's comments and, and, uh, I think reverting back to some of his earlier statements about, uh, risk analysis, risk assessments. Councillor McKinnon, that's, that's kind of where you come in to play with, uh, you know, what are the risks to, to future funding streams from senior levels of government? Uh, you know, what, what are the risks to our revenue streams locally, uh, whether it be property taxes or, uh, uh, or fees and charges, which we're seeing impacted heavily today by, by the COVID situation? So, you know, even though we're not taking that approach to setting, uh, reserve levels, I think there's a, there's going to be an element of risk assessment, um, you know, that we're going to have to, uh, we're going to have to work through. Even the risks around, uh, you know, our, our facilities and, and where capital expenditures are going to be required with those facilities. We mentioned the water treatment plant. Uh, we have, uh, you know, aging, uh, facilities in, in city hall, in the arena, recreation complex, the public works building. Those are all facilities that are going to require, uh, fairly significant capital in, in the not-too-distant future. So there's that, that element of risk as well.
Thank you. I think councillor Bush had a question. Can you put your mic on, Norm?
Yeah, sorry, Michelle. Thanks through the chair. Thanks, Stephen, for the report and, um, how clearly you've laid this out. I guess going back several, several treasures now all the way back to, um, John Cummings, et cetera, and some of the, I guess, some of the, uh, benchmarking that was done back in the day, uh, the targets that you suggested seem pretty realistic and, and modest, not excessive, modest from the perspective of, uh, what some other municipalities, even Kenora has with respect to their, um, reserves right now, but, um, they seem pretty realistic. Um, I do wonder just about the, uh, water treatment target and I'm wondering if, I know it's only a target, but at 1.170 million, it seems, seems a bit low. And I wonder, because it is a target and because, as you say, we probably have a big investment down the road, whether we shouldn't consider raising that interim target to a bit higher level like two to three million, just to make sure that we keep the, uh, keep the focus on needing to build that reserve over time. And that's one of our highest priority items that are going forward somewhere down the road. So that's, that's question number one. Uh, question number two, I'm wondering whether we, we might want to rename the hydro sales proceeds to something that more reflects where we're at today, whether it's a legacy fund or some other nomenclature, because I'm sure new citizens to Dryden wouldn't have a clue what hydro sale proceeds mean. Basically, we blew through those and drew them down essentially to zero through the DMPS be asked, so maybe there's a different name that might, uh, might serve us better going forward than hanging on to something that, uh, we blew through and really doesn't exist anymore. But overall, as I say, these seem like they're pretty realistic, uh, based on what you see in other communities and what some conventional benchmarking might suggest to us. So good work. Thank you.
Through the chair. I'm, I'm open, I'm open for any, um, guidance or direction from council. So, um, if, if council wants to provide, uh, me with direction to change the description of what our reserve funds, I'm, I'm a hundred percent open to that. I like the idea of, of, uh, legacy funds or, or something, something of that nature, but, um, is there any, any direction that council can give to me that I can put into this?
I feel, um, probably in the same, same ground as what Norm is, uh, saying as well as that, um, the hydro cell was so long ago. I want to say it was back in, oh gosh, over 20 years ago, close to. And, uh, and he would be right in saying that any new resident in and was interested in looking at our reports for the city would not have a clue what hydro cell meant. So renaming it to a legacy fund would be probably a good thing to do. Any suggestions or comments from council? Not seen.
I agree.
Oh, there you go. John says yes. Okay. Um, so I believe there is a, um, bylaw moving forward for October the 26th?
Or through the chair?
Oh, yep. Go Stephen.
So councillor Bush also was, um, proposing the possibility of an increase to the target on the water reserve. Can I receive some direction on that as well? If, uh, council, I'm, I'm fully supportive of establishing, um, higher targets. And, and in this case, I could, I could amend the policy to reflect a hundred percent of the, so the target would be a hundred percent of water revenue. So that would establish a $2.3 million reserve target?
I, uh, go ahead, Roger.
Just through the chair, just, uh, you know, in line with that, um, we know that we have some, uh, priority, uh, water, um, and, and sewer for that matter, projects out there. Um, and the public works manager is, is online with us tonight. He could probably help me out, but off the top of my head, we're well in excess of $3 million on those priority projects. So raising those targets at least for the, uh, for the near term would, would be in line to, uh, working towards funding those, those priority projects.
Any comment from council? Councillor Marty McKinnon?
I would support that.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I'm, um, I'm in agreement with councillor Marty McKinnon. I would also support that.
So the direction is to amend that target to be a hundred percent? And the, also the, uh, direction is to change a hydro sale proceeds reserve fund to legacy reserve fund?
Yes, we're getting agreement here. Thank you. And sorry for missing that first question from Nor, uh, from councillor Bush.
Those will be reflected in the policy amendment that council will, uh, I guess, approve or discuss at, uh, council this, this month.
Yes, you're correct. Along with that, uh, the few amendments that we just spoke of, um, that bylaw will come forward on the 26th for approval. Thank you. Thank you, Stephen. I think that's it for your reports. So moving, um, moving on with notices of motion, uh, we have one notice of motion this evening, uh, which I'll ask the acting clerk to review. Uh, the presentation, discussion and vote on this motion will happen on October the 26th only.
Okay, and we have, uh, a notice of motion submitted by councillor Shane McKinnon, uh, which will appear on the agenda for the regular meeting of council on October the 26th. The subject is OPP costing request and the notice of motion reads as follows, that a question placed on the ballot of the 2022 municipal election reading, should Dryden City Council request a cost for policing the community from the Ontario Provincial Police during the 2022 to 2026 term of council?
Thank you, Alison. Moving on from that, it is the announcements and I will, I would like to go first tonight, um, which is a change. Normally we, uh, we, we go last, but, um, at this time, as deputy mayor and chair of this meeting and as per the procedural bylaws, section 47 dash 38, I would like to call a point of order. I've made the decision that no discussion on OPP costing will be permitted in the announcements. The announcements portion of a council meeting are not meant to be used for debates or rebuttals, especially on such an important matter. The time for discussion on the OPP costing has been set for October the 26th, upon which there will be ample time for discussion and debates. After saying that, I would also like to thank all of the volunteers involved in organizing the upcoming events for, um, the Fall Fest Halloween festivities going on down at the Lower Hail Marsh. This event has been organized to follow all COVID safety rules and it gives our kids and, and our grownups the opportunity to, uh, get involved in the festivities. I would also like to send my condolences to the Uitzen family on the passing of their mom, Dot Uitzen. She was a longstanding Berkeley resident and a businesswoman on Airport Road and she will be sadly missed. Um, uh, gosh, it's been also very busy. So, um, the virtual Chamber of Commerce Business Excellence Awards will be streamed on, uh, this Saturday, October the 17th, and good luck to all of the nominees. I would like to thank M and R for trapping Mama Bear and her two cubs and relocating them off our neighbor's apple tree to a better location in nature. And, um, lastly, I've been busy attending meetings for PACE, the Chamber of Commerce, the Working Circle, and I was also very proud to be part of the Working Circle Orange T-shirt Day. I do want to mention that there was a comment at our Working Circle in regards to the Orange Shirt Day. It was, um, widely approved and another comment that was made in one of, uh, uh, the circle committees was the fact that her children wear the orange shirt, uh, not only just on Orange Shirt Day, and I thought that was a great idea. It's, um, she keeps it in, in the closet and the kids pull it out all of the time. And I think that's, um, a great way to come about, uh, come about to remembering and honoring those people. So, um, thank you once again. And with that, I will ask, I will start with councillor McKinnon, Marty McKinnon?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you.
I, uh, I don't have much to say tonight, other than, uh, I continue to be amazed by the amount of work that our fire chief and his team are turning, turning out over there and, and, uh, building up, uh, a really good professional, uh, fire association over there. So that, that, uh, that's wonderful work that's going on there and kudos to them for, for all they put into our community. It's a wonderful asset to have. I've heard some discussion tonight, uh, about, uh, housing in the community and such like that, and, uh, this is my busy week. So tomorrow afternoon and all day Thursday, the Kenora District Service Board meets. And there are numerous, numerous items on their deal with seniors housing, uh, homelessness, all, all those, all those things I heard concerns about tonight. They're will, working diligently to, uh, to resolve some of our housing issues in our community and, uh, rent good for, for income is a, is a huge part of that. Re, uh, fixing up the Dryden nonprofit housing buildings, which have 20% of, uh, 20% of them are, are basically vacant right now because they need repairs. So all that kind of stuff is, is going on in our community and I'll, I'll bring you back a good report in two weeks after those meetings to let you know where, where they sit with that and, uh, the other thing I heard mentioned was, was, uh, worries about funding and we all have to keep that in the front of our mind, that the government's easing up all kinds of cash for all kinds of things right now, but that is going to end and there will be, we will come on times when, when, uh, money's going to be really hard to get. That's my two cents.
Thank you. Mayor Wilson?
Sure, thank you. I received a letter from the Ministry of Finance Office. What they're looking for is, uh, us to share our ideas or me to share ideas on what we'd like to see on the upcoming fall budget. And, uh, thanks to Stephen Lindsdale-Roe for, uh, providing me with, uh, some things. And, uh, just wanted to mention a few of them just for, for your sake and for the public's sake. And also mentioned to you that, uh, it has to be in on the 16th. So if there's anything you wanted to add, feel free to send me an email and I'll see if I can get it included, all right? But, uh, yeah, one is, um, see the, have the province cancel or reverse the downwelling of costs for social services, thinking social assistance, social housing, long-term care, childcare, ambulance services and public health. This would immediately enable us to start addressing our infrastructure deficit without reliance on the provincial government for application-based infrastructure grants. And, uh, two things come to mind here. One is Ontario is the only province in Canada where property taxpayers are required to fund the province's income redistribution programs. And all other jurisdictions all across Canada use income taxes and/or consumption taxes to fund these programs and services. So that's a real whammy on householders and property owners in Ontario. And the second thing is municipalities have far more limited revenue options than senior levels of government. So the government of Ontario forced and continue to force municipalities to increase property taxes, cut services and underspend on municipal infrastructure in order to absorb the downwelling costs. And, um, every municipality in Ontario is frustrated, has been frustrated for a long time, uh, about, uh, this situation in, in Ontario. So, um, so that's what's going to go to the finance minister, uh, hopefully in a few days. And also I attended a regional, Dryden Regional Airport stakeholder session hosted by Lumex, uh, along with our CIO and airport manager last Wednesday to better understand the current status of the facility and also potential opportunities. And, you know, basically it's hard not to get glum when you think about the air industry, right? There are trying times and there's no quick fix in sight, but Lumex and, uh, the city, you know, we're brainstorming, looking to find areas where we can leverage our strengths. I also appreciated being invited to the Rotary Lunch Meeting on the 30th, where they hosted a NWMO transportation framework presentation and a Q and A. And I also popped in online to the Dryden Anti-Racism Network meeting as they nominated a new slate of officers. And I just want to encourage anyone who's looking to contribute to the betterment of everyone in our town to consider offering your, your time, your energy and your talent to DARN. Try it for a year or two. They'd appreciate, uh, your efforts, your help. And you never know, you may find you stay for more than a year or two, but, uh, there's a, there's a lot of organizations out there, volunteer organizations who are having a difficult time right now keeping on going because of COVID and the lack of ability to meet in, in the social settings that they're used to. So, so, uh, Dryden Knights, please, uh, don't, don't forget those volunteer organizations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Wilson. Councillor Shane McKinnon?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'd just like to mention COVID. Uh, we have two active cases in our area. Uh, there was nine cases in Kenoria, uh, Kenora earlier this month and the Northwest Health Unit is conducting tracing and determining if there has been any community spread in Kenora. Just a reminder that testing doesn't prevent COVID. Masks and hand washing and social distancing prevent the spread. Thank you.
Uh, councillor Calucci?
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair. Uh, just a couple of things. One, I took the drive around Dryden before I, I went on vacation here and just noticing a lot of the, the property owners improving their houses and the look and, and whatnot. So kudos to all of them for making Dryden look a lot better. Uh, secondly, with you, as you just mentioned, the Dryden Haunt, uh, it starts this weekend and the, and the next three weekends in a row. I will miss the first two, but I will be there for the last one. So, uh, I wish them all success and please, uh, support them. This could be an annual event, so we're hoping to, uh, do a really good job with that. And thirdly, I guess I'm, I am in Ottawa, so you know that my daughter's having a baby soon and that's why I'm here to support her. So that's my report.
Thank you, councillor Calucci. And, uh, final, I guess, would be councillor Bush.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of comments. We did have our second, uh, meeting of the Working Circle on October the 7th. Have to say it was a very long but very productive meeting. Councillor McKinnon invited us to, uh, listen in on a presentation at the DARN Annual General Meeting at the same time, which was very good. We've agreed as a group to meet more frequently based on the high priority things that we want to get done in a timely manner and, um, also pleased to say that Ted Mitchell has joined our Working Circle as well. I know it's, uh, in the community, there's a lot of different, uh, groups who are trying to keep, uh, going through Zoom meetings and it's challenging because everybody misses the face-to-face interface and, uh, the relationship building that goes on that...
the face-to-face interface and, uh, the relationship building that goes on that you just really can't achieve through Zoom meetings. But I know, uh, some organizations and some people are getting a little bit of COVID fatigue trying to keep things going through Zoom meetings, but I just encourage everybody to, uh, keep doing as much as you can in these, uh, challenging times. And, um, I'm also looking forward, councillor Marty McKinnon, to hear more about affordable housing solutions that may be coming forward from KDSB and perhaps an update on the local leads. We haven't heard too much about, uh, local leads, I guess, for a number of months. It'd be interesting to understand how many people are actually looking for housing kind of on an ongoing basis. So, uh, I think that's about, uh, all I have, uh, for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. I think I got everyone. Um, I guess with that, um, we'll ask, request the, uh, acting clerk for someone to move in second a motion for adjournment.
Absolutely. Can I have someone move in second the adjournment? Councillor Calucci and councillor Bush? Thank you. Moved by councillor Calucci, seconded by councillor Bush. This meeting do hereby adjourn.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Thank you and have a good night, gentlemen.
Have a good night.